About five minutes late. He'll be here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
He's here.
Mayor Pro temp Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
President.
Commissioner Itza Flores. We have a call.
Motion to excuse absent members?
Who to excuse absent members?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item one B, Pledge of Allegiance and Evocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect us all. This in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Luis. Welcome everybody. We'll go into item two, Proclamations. Item two A, Proclamation proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I believe the police department is here to accept this proclamation.
You're getting back, back feet.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. It's, I'm Andy Harvey. I'm the Chief of Police per, for the record. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it's a time that we reflect on, on something that affects all of us, right? We would think about family violence and domestic violence. It's not just the victim who suffers, but also the victim's family and the victim's friends. And ultimately, it affects all of us as a community. And so, we know in order to, to impact, to make an impact on family violence, we need to work as a community in order to do something, against something that plagues our society. I want to make sure that, that you, you guys know that you have a team here in FAR that not only focuses on domestic violences, but focuses on education and, and informing and making sure that we have the resources and partnering with other agencies in order to, to do something good for the victims, make sure that we help them where they are, especially in their time of need. We have a great team, and I'm gonna have Deputy Chief Gonzalez introduce the team. Last Friday, we had a Light at the End of the Tunnel event. It was a walk that we had, a march, and we teamed up with San Juan, and we met at the trails, and we went underneath one of the tunnels, and it was called a Light at the End of the Tunnel. And it was our first one that we did with San Juan, and we know that in the future we'll have bigger and more events like this in order to bring more awareness. So, I wanted to update you on that. So, let me introduce Deputy Chief Johnny Gonzalez, and he's gonna introduce the great team we have in FAR. So, thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Just like the chief mentioned, we had a, an event last Friday. I thought it went real, real well. Eight thirty o'clock. We had a nice, early, cool morning. Weather turned out good for us where it wasn't too hot, and kinda had a, a small walk to, to raise awareness for domestic violence. Wanna thank the City of FAR Commission, Mayor, for your continued support on this. I know when Chief Hark came last year, one of the initiatives we had is to create a domestic violence unit, which we were able to establish with that initiative and that idea in mind. I always thought, hey, you know what? It, it would be something to really have, something here for the City of FAR and for the victims, anyone that we could help and assist, where we could ultimately provide services readily available. And, and I do have, also wanna recognize a part of that endeavor was our detective Laura Leteria, which is with us today on that as well. And she's a big part of, of that unit that we started. Wanna, wanna go ahead and acknowledge and recognize those folks that we have that play a key role into helping victims of these type of cases. We have Alancatú, which is our domestic violence coordinator, right here. We have Nancy Gonzalez. She's our human trafficking liaison, right over here to the left. We also have Mario Garza, also, who provides crime victims liaison and services. And we also have one more person, Joe Dimas, who also provides information and assistance to, to these victims. So, just wanna, again, thank, thank you for your continued support, and, and we can say that we, we, this type of, of violence, this type of, of cases, don't go unlooked at, and we take them very seriously, and we're here to just let the folks know out there that we're here to help as any way we can. With that, wanna bring up Alancantú for a few words. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Alancantú. I'm the domestic violence coordinator for the FAR Police Department. I would like to show my gratitude to the city officials for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Dr. Ambrosio Hernández, and the Commissioners here present, for letting us continue to help victims get assistance they need, whether it's providing resources or applying for an emergency protection order. We will continue to support the FAR Police Department and the citizens of FAR with the resources needed to end domestic violence. And this is just kinda like a little token of appreciation for the continued support of Domestic Violence Task Force.
Hey, what, hey, what do you turn to me? How about Danny? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Now they'll read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chief. Whereas the City of FAR and the FAR Police Department recognizes-
Mike, Mike.
And-
And participates in public awareness campaign to support Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas one in four women and one in nine men experience violence by an intimate partner, and domestic violence can take the form of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. And whereas by providing our community with education about healthy relationships, and by changing attitude to support violence, we recognize that domestic violence can be prevented, and the FAR Police Department will work to provide prevention education on this appalling crime. And whereas it is vital to raise community and educational awareness and provide training for all, so they, they may recognize when signs of domestic violence occur. And whereas everyone has a right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. And whereas City of FAR urges all City of FAR residents to work toward ending domestic violence by empowering people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in accessing and the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for people in need, instituting effective educational tools in schools, and engaging in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of threat caused by domestics and family violence. Now, therefore, I, Ramiro Caballero, representing Ambrosio Hernández, Mayor of the City of FAR, by the virtue of the authority vested in me, and, and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-one as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause by the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on this eighteenth day of October twenty twenty-one.
Chief, did you notice with the COVID pandemic, an increase in domestic violence?
We, we did, but it's actually interesting. As we're coming out of it, we're seeing more. And so, don't, really don't know what to attribute to that, but we are seeing more. But it's always been around, right?
Yes.
So, that's something that we need to continue working on. But it's increasing like other violent crimes, but this is one that really plagues us, and it takes all of us for sure.
We tend to see it in, and from the medical side, we tend to see it more during holidays, for whatever reason, probably because it's family gatherings, right? But that's, we tend to see a lot of, a big spike in, in the trauma service.
Yes, and that's absolutely true. Same, yeah.
The last one is, how did you get San Juan to participate?
Well, we have an inside guy here, right, with us, you know, a little, we have the, the mayor of San Juan that really helped us with that, so. But they, they came, we joined up, and it was a really, really nice event.
Oh, good. Good to see that. Try to see they're working together.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right. If you can join us up for photo, Chief?
Be great. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. Good job. Thank you. Item number three, Public Testimony. Anybody sign up?
Uh, yes, sir. We have Mr. Pedro Garcia signed up for, from FAR Community Theater to speak on item ten G.
Which one, ten G?
Ten G.
Yes, FAR Theater. Yes, welcome, sir.
Okay, yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Come on up, sir.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, City of FAR Administration and everyone here. My name is Pedro Garcia. I am a, I also live in the City of FAR. I'm a happy resident of, of this down-to-earth town. That's what I call it. I tell a lot of people, FAR is really down-to-earth. And, and it really, and I say that with a lot of love, and, and I live in front of FAR San Juan Alamo Southwest High School, in a little subdivision there. And I'm happy because I'm close to the awesome walking and biking trails, and I can take my bike and get on where the waste management plant is, and I can go underneath the tunnels, and I can go all the way to Raúl Longoria, almost over there, and, and I walk a lot, and, and it's saving a lot of lives. So, whoever's involved in that, I just wanna say thank you, 'cause diabetes is a big epidemic in the valley, and, and people are getting on those trails. And they're off-road, they're safe, they're beautiful, they're well-lit, even the one Jones Box Park has as well. I'm a big fan of that, so I wanted to thank you to begin with. On behalf of the FAR Community Theater Company and the thousands of people that come as talent, as crew, and as audiences, we wanna thank you for your continued support. And yes, we all had rocky times here with the pandemic and stuff, but the FAR Community Theater Company is a little theater that could, that would in this, and it's still doing. And we are currently in, going into rehearsals for At the Hono Christmas Carol for the fourth year, because I was told that they really liked that play, and people continue to come see it. This time, we're doing a version with children and teens. So, Mr. Scrooge is gonna be a teen acting as Mr. Scrooge, and, and, but, but our Scrooge, his name is Mr. Codos. Yeah, Mr. Codos, porque es bien Codo. And our play is set in the Rio Grande Valley of South Texas. So, you gotta come see it if you have a chance.
Mr. Garcia, your time is up.
Oh, that's it?
Oh.
Well, I was gonna, I'll finish with this, and I appreciate that. Yeah, we're touring to the four different spaces here, the FAR Amphitheater, Vanguard Bird Nature Center, the Pepesalinas, beautiful place, and also downtown, down at the Development and Research Center. And we're very, very grateful. If you ever wanna talk to me or call me for anything, please let me know. And again, thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
There's also gonna be another footprint for you in the north side of FAR, on, on Nolana, right? There'll be another park, right?
Oh, yeah.
Coming up.
The amphitheater, they're also pretty huge.
Yeah, by the high school in front.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just north of that. And so, then that's being completed.
We should have, be, be ready to open by December.
Oh, great.
Just so you know, so when your maker schedules, have that in, in mind.
I certainly will.
Thank you, sir.
Blessings, thank you.
Anybody else, mother? No, sir. Item number four, Public Hearings. Anybody sign up?
None.
None. Alrighty. City Managers Report. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, I have a couple of reports for y'all today. One submission, a sales tax collection report for October twenty twenty-one. Year to date, we have true growth of a twenty-one point six-three percent, which is great. And October, this time, this same time last year, to October twenty twenty-one, a ten point one-nine percent increase. So, we're still doing fairly well, very into positive. Submission of Property Tax Collection Report. We are point-two-six percent higher than last year. We're at ninety-six point three-three percent in total collections, so that's very, very good. Of course, we wanna reach a hundred. We're at ninety-six point three-three, so that's good. I have a couple of other announcements. I don't know if you all know, it's more of an operational thing, but we have a team called the Poet Team. P-O-E-T, it's FAR Ordinance Enforcement Team. It's a combination of Development Services, PD, Fire, and Court. They go and tackle some of these bigger cases that we have, they'll update structures, stuff like that. I wanna bring them up. Roy, and the team, can y'all come up? So, one of the things that we've traditionally had problems with, and other cities have problems with too, is addressing.
What's that?
Addressing your houses, your number houses.
Oh, the physical address.
Physical addresses on your house. When nine-one-one is, is dispatched, whether it's fire, police, or EMS, you know, seconds count, so address is important. So, they took it upon themselves, no direction from anybody. This is what they do. It took upon itself to help out the citizens. So, Roy?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name, for the record, is Rogelio Rodriguez, Assistant Director for Development Services. So, this idea came about, Mayor, while having one of our Poet meetings. The concern came out from our first responders that, at nighttime or during the day, they were having a hard time locating the addresses. So, we sat down and, and we came up with the idea, what about if we do something, you know, to help especially our elderly, our disabled? So, we came up with this plan, and with the great support of our city manager, we were able to come up with these two plaques. So, we will be issuing these two plaques to individuals that are sixty-five and older, and anybody who's in assistance of it. Our goal will eventually be to maybe integrate that with maybe our, our new residential homes. They are reflective, so they should help.
I see that. Can I, can I buy that for my house?
You sure you can?
I-
I'm not over sixty-five.
You can still buy it. We're gonna make them available to everybody. Did you mention out of a sheet, how many do you get?
Out of the sheet, we should get about sixty-five to seventy of, of those placers. So, we'll be able to produce a good amount. They average about six to seven dollars each.
Yeah.
They're aluminum, they're reflective, they'll last forever, so.
They're very nice.
Yes.
Is the public able to see those right now?
As of now, right now, no, Mayor. As of this afternoon, we'll go ahead and advertise them on social media.
Yeah, they're beautiful.
So, they do, they did do a video also on addressing that we wanna show that-
Oh, great.
-fixes this thing off. Uh-oh.
Volume?
Emergency responders and city employees are constantly looking for your houses and are having trouble locating due to the lack of house numbers.
Development Services and Codey would like to remind all residents from the City of FAR the importance of having your address visible from the roadway.
It is important that we have clearly posted house numbers. This can save precious time during an emergency. Response time is critical. Seconds lost can mean the difference between life and death.
The different type of emergencies we respond to are fires, any kind of medical emergency, motor vehicle accidents, burglaries, and any other emergencies.
Do your part in making sure your house number is clearly visible from the street. House numbers must be painted to be at least four inches in height, and with the width no less than zero-point-five inches. And remember, we are Team FAR.
Mayor and Commissioner, the goal is gonna be for our first responders and other members of Poet to go out on a, on a Friday morning, Friday afternoon, and actually placard the actual addressing at the resident's home.
Very nice. Congratulations. That's really nice. That's a great project.
Thank you.
Very innovative.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Great work.
And just for clarification, I left off, Public Works is part of it too, so. I didn't want y'all to get mad at me.
Okay.
Sorry, guys. One more report I have for you all is, every year, there's an award called the Scenic City. Where's Roland? Oh, there you are. When you group up. I don't wanna steal your thunder, so that's about as far as I'll, I'll go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, sir.
For the record, Roland Gomez interim Director of Development Services. The City of FAR was presented with the Scenic City Certification on Wednesday, October sixth, at the Georgia Brown Convention Center, in conjunction with the Texas Municipal League's Annual Conference that took place in Houston. The City of FAR was among twenty-two Texas cities that have been recognized as a twenty-twenty-one Certified Scenic Cities, Certified Scenic City Award recipients through the Scenic City Certification Program. The City of FAR was first certified in twenty sixteen as a recognized scenic city, and in twenty eighteen upgraded to Silver Status. This year, the City of FAR has been recertified as a Silver recipient. The Scenic City Certification Program is a nationally recognized, one-of-a-kind model developed to provide communities with a comprehensive set of standards and evaluation for the design and development of public roadways and spaces. Assessment is points-based, and official certification is earned by cities that score points in the upper range and meet threshold standards for landscaping, tree planting, and sign regulations. I would like to introduce our planning staff that helped with the recertification process, Anaisa Lucirio, Eri Martinez, and Nelly Terrazas.
You wanna come up and?
Powed to be a Certified Scenic City FAR. In two thousand and sixteen, we were recognized. In two thousand and eighteen, we earned the Silver, as well as twenty-twenty-one. The mission of the Scenic City Certification Program is to support and recognize Texas municipalities that implement high-quality scenic standards for public roadways and spaces.
Very nice. Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you.
I just wanna add a quick, Mayor. You know, we've had it for a couple of years, and, and it's a real good, real good award, but if you look at the bigger picture, there's one thousand seven hundred and forty-one cities in the state of Texas, and you're one of twenty, or twenty-two.
Twenty-two for the, for the, for the year twenty-twenty-one. Yes, sir.
Outstanding. So, will the, the, do the parks, the trails help with the scenic, or is it just literally what you said?
Yes, no, that, that does help.
The signage of trees?
Signs, trees, parks. So, there's a series of questions that they ask, and the questions that they do ask, you have to attach the actual ordinance or resolution to that, for that, for that question.
Yeah, our standards and our ordinances play a big part in this, and what, and that reflects what the Commission is willing to enforce on the communities, that, hey, we want landscaping, we wanna beautify our city.
That is correct.
Okay, well, bring those things forward so we can study them, and that way, if we wanna see the gold.
Yes, sir. Definitely. Platinum's a good one.
That's right, that's right. Platinum's a better. That's good. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Great job.
And the last thing I have, Mayor Commissioners, a couple of months ago, you authorized us to order some new ambulances. The first one is here. The rest will be coming in, in the next couple of months, but it's beautiful, and it is outside, right? It's in the back? It's in the, yeah, we're gonna drive it in. It's in the back parking lot, so after the commission meeting, we invite y'all to go look at it. It's fully stocked and ready to go.
Okay.
That's all I have for the City Manager Reports.
Consent agenda.
Okay, we'll go onto consent agenda items six, six A. All the items are there routine, non-controversial, and can be enacted on one motion, should you so choose.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven A, consideration action if any on ordinance amending ordinance two-zero-zero-six dash four-seven, standards manual, construction and development manual. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, second and final reading, this is fixing our standards for drainage.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven B, consideration action if any on ordinance, upcoming resolution for designation of the local rabies control authority for the City of FAR. Yes, by law, we have to have somebody on staff that is a local rabies authority. Daniel Casuro, our lead animal control officer, is willing to take on their responsibilities. Staff is recommended approval. Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Eight A, under administrative, consideration action if any on sponsorship for Catholic Charities eleven annual gala event to be held on Thursday, October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, I have several things I wanna talk to you about, and this gala, I'd like to talk to you in executive session. That's great.
Okay.
We gotta go in a little bit. Eight B, consideration action if any on amending the professional architect rotation list for architectural projects. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, a while back, we had talked about redoing the golf course, modernizing it. There's a company called Jeff, Jeffrey Blum Limited. We wanted to add him and get him pre-qualified and add him to the list for rotation.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes.
Thank you. Eight C, discussion with the Board of Commissioners and City of FAR Strategic Plan. Yes, sir, this is also an executive session item.
Okay.
Nine A, consideration and action if any authorized city manager to purchase twenty-twenty-one Bearcat armored vehicle from Lenco out of Pittsfield, Massachusetts, for the FAR Police Department, the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-five dollars. Yes, sir, this is a sole-source item. This is a armored vehicle for, for emergencies.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine B, consideration action if any authorized city manager to purchase a laser scanner crime scene slash crash scene reconstruction equipment and software from FARO Technologies Incorporated out of Lake Mary, Florida, in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand dollars for the FAR Police Department. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, also sole-source vendor. Staff is recommended approval. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes.
Thank you. Nine C, consideration action if any authorized city manager to purchase ten Axon Taser times two devices from Axon Enterprises, Inc., out of Scottsdale, Arizona, through TechSmart, by contract number six-eighty-dash-A-one, in the amount of twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for the FAR Police Department. Yes, this is a state-bid item. Staff is recommended approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine D, consideration action if any on the purchase of portable radios for the FAR Department and Public Safety Communication Department for Motorola Solutions utilizing HGC contract RA-zero-five-dash-two-one, in the amount of eighty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars and eighty-four cents. This for emergency response. Staff is recommended approval. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes.
Nine E, consideration and action if any authorized city manager to purchase fiber and conduit material for the citywide fiber project phase three through phase five from Graybar, Inc., through Omnia Cooperative Contract Number EV-two-three-seven-zero, in the amount not to exceed ten million, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. Yes, sir, this is for the remainder of the contract. We're buying all the materials we need. Move to approve.
Second.
Yes, Commissioner.
The work that they're doing on twenty-one, they're trying more, is that-
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That's it.
Yes, sir.
That's a microtransmit.
Just about halfway done on the phase two, which is the spine going down twenty-one.
And, and also, for clarification, we've had, we said we're gonna outfit everybody in the city, but there are some residents, especially some of the elderly residents, that don't care for fiber optic, and that's okay. Doesn't mean we're gonna come in, invade your home and, and stick you with a fiber optic line. If you so choose not to use it or don't want it, you will be asked ahead of time, do you want us to install it? If not, then we just, you know, move on to the next house. So, I don't want people worried that they're gonna have, participate in the, in the network, 'cause they don't. It's an option. Any further, this, yes?
Mayor, make sure you tell them that if they refuse the first time, if they want it later, it's gonna take a while. By then, they get it, because you're gonna go to the next section.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Because I know someone probably want it later, right? Wants to find out how well it works.
Yeah, they might, but the majority of, it's just that they, they don't have an interest in the internet. So, that, that's okay. That's your choice. Anyways, any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine F, consideration action if any authorized city manager to purchase firewalls for the citywide fiber project from NetSync Network Solutions, Inc., through Texas DIR, DIR Contract Number DIR-CPO-four-three-zero, in the amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and three cents. Yes, sir, this is also for the fiber project. These are the firewalls needed to filter the information. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Nine G, consideration action if any on the pool, the purchase of one current-model triple-combination pumper for the FAR Department from Sidens Martin Emergency Group LLC out of Denton, Texas, utilizing buyboard contract number six-five-one-dash-two-one, in the amount of seven-hundred-and-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventeen cents. Yes, sir, this is a budget item for the FAR Department. Staff is recommended approval. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten A, consideration action if any on renewal of a local agreement between FAR Police Department and South Texas Auto Task Force. Staff is recommended approval. It's a contract we have.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten B, consideration action if any- Thank you. 10B, consideration action if any allowing FAR EMS to enter into an affiliation agreement with South Texas College to allow their EMS students to do their clinical rotations with FAR EMS. Yes, sir, these students will come on the unit to do their clinical rotations. Staff is recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
10C, consideration action if any on renewal of memorandum of understanding between Texas Department of Public Safety and FAR Police Department for certification of commercial vehicles and weight enforcement. Yes, sir, this is an existing MOU we have with TexasDOT. They pay our officers to do commercial vehicle enforcement. Staff is recommending approval.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. 10D, consideration action if any on award of supply contract for the purchase of structural firefighting helmets to Costco Industries out of La Porte, Texas. Yes, sir, we did go out for bids. Costco came in low bidder. Staff is recommending approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. 10E, consideration action if any allowing FAR Fire, correction, FAR Police Department to enter into an interlocal agreement with Donna Police Department for use of their firing shooting range in Donna, Texas. Yes, sir, we've been going over there at their grace and their mercy. We do want to formalize it for a while till we get our new range up and running since our old one was discontinued with a trail.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. 10F, consideration action if any authorized city manager to award a service contract for fleet maintenance services to Spikes Motor Company, Inc. out of Mission, Texas. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, fleet management is getting pretty complicated. We'd rather source it out to the experts. We did go out for bids and Spikes Ford was the only one that came in with a bid. It is a year-to-year contract, so as we start getting newer vehicles in this new program that we just did with Enterprise, we'll start phasing this out also. There's no local individual? No, sir. What, they're not you? There you are.
Good afternoon. Mr. Wiley, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners, answer your question, Mr. Carrillo. Yes, we invite, we send out a total of 100 participating vendors. Unfortunately, the local one didn't participate, but we reached them out.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Opposed? I mean, in favor, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Thank you, sir, for that explanation.
Thank you. 10G, consideration action depending on agreement between City of FAR and the FAR Community Theater for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Yes, sir, it's a standard contract. Staff is recommending approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. The last item is legal, taken up and executed.
And according to Section 551.071 through 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, the Board of Commissioners, everybody gets to know that it is going, committing to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of this meeting agenda, the time now being 4:33. The time is 4:52. We're back in open session.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Back in open session. 8A, consideration action if any on sponsorship for Catholic Charities 11 Annual Gala Events to be held Thursday, October 28, 2021. As discussed in executive, so moved.
Second.
Anybody opposed? No, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. 8C is only for discussion, so there's no action. And then 11, legal, conversation with City of Far and Action if any on assistance of money.
The time is 4:52. We're back in open session.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Back in open session. 8A, consideration action if any on Catholic Charities 11 Annual Gala Events to be held.
That's the last meeting.
Number 718 CV002 in the United States District Court, Southern District of Texas, McAllen Division. As discussed in executive, so moved.
Second.
Anybody opposed? No? It passes.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We're adjourned at 4:53. Thank you, everybody.